This conference will now be recorded.
So, good evening. Seeing that we do have a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council of the City of Manassas order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Rappella.
Here, President.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgady.
Here.
Alderman Tedgady.
Here.
All are present with the absence of Alderman Taylor. Not sure he's on or not.
He was here a second ago.
It is microphone time. James, come on.
James, are you there?
He's here in spirit. Let's go.
So, do we have a motion for the suspension of the rules at this point?
Mayor.
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to suspend the rules, which we have done for several months now, so that the common council can use their electronic devices to have this tell web conference.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, well, the motion carries. We'll move on to report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We do have EJ Jalinski and I believe Travis Founder here this evening to give us a report on the development at PJC Group, which is the former Gilbert site. EJ, did you want to start?
I'll let Travis handle all of it, but basically, we're here to answer your questions. I'm happy to chime in when I can.
Mayor, your mic's off.
My mic's off. Travis, you're going to have to turn your mic on if you... I don't know if I can turn them on.
Hear me?
Yes.
James is here right now.
Perfect.
James is here.
We see James now.
Travis, did you have a report for us, or?
Uh, I guess, Mayor, I, yeah, like EJ said, we're here to answer questions as a, I guess, from a general report standpoint. Obviously, you guys asked us here for a reason. As far as the status of the, status of the site, it's, uh, it's not under contract yet. As a whole, I mean, we've had it listed for a while, as you guys will know, which is again why we're here. The property continues to get, um, it has in the past and continues to get a, a pretty great deal of interest. Um, that probably, I don't want to say it comes as a surprise, but there's a, there's always a lot of interest when you have a, I guess, a property like this with the type of, uh, waterfrontage that it has. Um, here's, uh, there's a myriad of reasons, I guess, or, well, there's a, the, the, the range of different investors that looks at this property are anywhere from, we've had people, anywhere from investors from Colorado all the way to right down to the most, our, our best, uh, most promising prospects, I guess, from a sales standpoint, are obviously local, people that understand what the spot is, what the potential is for it, especially, um, when there's a, I have a, I have a heavy, uh, heavy focus on the, what it can be, again, especially to local investors, uh, heavy what it can be focused on things like other, other local projects like River Heath, um, Appleton, and, uh, you know, projects like that, that this is a pretty obvious, a pretty obvious site where you could do things very, very similar to River Heath and other, and other projects like that. I guess, or I just, before I just open it up for questions, like, as far as moving the property, um, under contracts, my client's on the call, so I'm going to make up a bunch of really good excuses right now, uh, that's why it's not, just kidding, there's, I, I, I do think we're, um, our biggest challenge at this point, that I'm not talking external, if I had to go external, people outside of the state, there's probably well over 50 in court, like, direct inquiries. People I've Face, I've FaceTimed and looked at the property with, I've sent site plans to, um, it's, it's a lot. It gets an enormous amount of activity, um, for a piece of vacant property. And again, it's because it's got some good advertising, some good video, et cetera, et cetera, so it gets a decent amount of attention, but, uh, usually the look away is, uh, or usually when people walk away, I don't want to say walk away, like a negative, may, people look and then they, they don't pull the trigger. Most of the times, it's not an opportunity zone, and a lot of the guys that are looking at something like this are looking for opportunity zone, they're looking for other, uh, looking for big tax incentives, they're looking for, um, uh, sites that are maybe a little bit more heavily condensed. It's a very unique piece of property because it's got a good price tag on it, and it's a price tag that both EJ and I think is pretty, pretty appropriate, to be honest with you. Um, it's arguable, yeah, if you throw it up for $250,000, $500,000, it probably sells tomorrow, but, um, it's, it's worth more than that, and it's a, it's being the unique site that it is. I mean, that's, uh, price could certainly play, could certainly play a, play a factor when there's a, a site right next to it that, uh, you know, just got work, just, just got worked on, and I don't want to say was, uh, you know, was acquired for a little bit cheaper than, than ours was, and, uh, I guess, just to close it out with, with that statement, there's activity in downtown Manassas, fantastic activity between, um, Brin or Donnelly-Bonta. I think that we can all, I think the very obvious thing to say is there's more attention on it now than there ever has been for very, very geographically obvious reasons of, you got CR right next door ripping, ripping down that site, which is awesome, and it, and again, it just, it draws immediate attention, it draws more and more attention to the site, so as of now, we're, I get more and more phone calls on it all the time, especially, especially local investors. Development-wise, developer-wise, there's always developer interest in it. Um, the only, and I mean this with the most, with, with, with all the due respect in the world, developers want it for free. Um, and I don't mean that about, but, you know, the developer wants it for free. I could call Kit Golden right now, and he would, he'd love to take it off our hands for nothing and, you know, develop it, and, you know, that's it, but, uh, you know, the, um, developers want it for free, investors are, are the ones who matter, and they're the ones who are really, really starting to take, um, take a look at what it can be in conjunction with what's happening right next door. I think the minute you start seeing those buildings done next door is when you're going to see somebody pull the trigger, especially from an apartment standpoint, from a mixed-use standpoint, what's happening next door, what's happening on Brin and the rest of downtown, between Mayor and Sam and everybody that's working on, on those projects. Those projects are unquestionably driving new traffic to the site because it's the last vacant spot to do a lot of cool stuff, like the other cool stuff that's happening next door and across the street and whatnot, so there we are for now.
Does anyone have questions for either Travis or EJ? Alderman Sevigny?
Oh, I was up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, EJ, it's good to see you.
Hi.
Haven't seen you in a long time, and hope you run for judge again.
Five times is enough, don't you think, Stan?
No, no. You're, you're, uh, you're older like me now. You have, uh, more, uh, experience now. Anyways, uh, the only, my big question is, is either for, uh, uh, EJ or Travis is, uh, how have you been marketing this? Because I haven't seen anything other than, I really like that little 40-second thing on eBay from Atlas, where they show the possibilities of buildings going on those properties.
That was actually one of the first pieces of advertising we did a couple of years ago, and I can, there's, it's funny because it wasn't, and I, I kind of forgot that that was, uh, that was At, that was Atlas, uh, a previous company I owned with a former business partner. Um, I, uh, we, we, since, basically, uh, it doesn't matter that it's Atlas or NextGen, well, it's just suffice it to say, to answer the question, or to answer that part quickly, um, formed a, formed a new commercial, uh, advertising branch under my, uh, under my, my, my real estate name and turned out to be NextGen. That was one of the, one of the first pieces we did. We've done probably a dozen videos since then, uh, not just, I want to call them videos, it, like, over a dozen drone, uh, drone-in walked promo videos since then, um, which I'm happy to, uh, send you guys a couple of them if you want to, if you want to.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to see that.
Definitely. Let me just, uh, and, and I, and I say this, it's kind of funny because I say this in the residential side or the commercial side, depending on who I'm talking to, but generally speaking, if you're not seeing it, it's probably doing what it should be doing. Um, the advertising you put behind stuff like that is usually, there are a couple of different ways of doing it. One, you look at things like, um, your Co-Stars and Loop Nets and all your other commercial, uh, real estate websites and stuff. They obviously, like, links and stuff are on there, um, but the other way you use those are, uh, through targeted links, just like everybody clicked on the link on the go-to meeting tonight. Um, those get blasted out, a link to a, uh, to a video or two get blasted out at least once, once a month. It doesn't sound like a lot, but we blast them a ton at the beginning, like, once a week for eight weeks straight, and then after that, we're just spam mail, so we think you don't want to push it too much, but we have a list of developers and investors that's pretty long, not to mention other, you know, local and, uh, regional and, local and regional, um, brokers that the link goes out to, and it's, it is, it's an advertisement to flyer, if you will, type email, uh, says, hey, and I, you know, I'm from the Fox Cities, I grew up in Manassas, so I have kind of a special, uh, I don't know, I can get angsty with this when I talk to people, because I tell people all the time, um, all the time, locally especially, Kip and I talk about it a lot, and I, I tell people all the time, this is probably, this is going to be one of the last great waterfront, you know, riverfront, uh, waterfront development projects the Fox Cities will see again, because it's a huge site combined with Bonta and our Donnelly. I mean, there's, show me another site this large that's available for development that's shovel-ready right now, you know, so it's, it's actually, it's a fun one, and it's an easy one to advertise, um, until you, you know, ask for a million bucks for it, and then, you know, that's when you are over a million dollars for it, and that's when you're just waiting for the, you're waiting for the right developer, you're waiting for the right guy, you know, and, uh, and that's it, but, um, but, yeah, video-wise.
You're supposed to make it 999,000.
Awesome.
Take a look off, and they might be interested.
Yeah. EJ?
Also, too, um,
Stan, you've got to be, and I know you do.
The city has a website and, uh, in community development, and it lists properties, and I looked at that recently, and your property is not listed on there. So, you know, the other thing is, is we should have a good partnership here with your organization to, to support your, um, selling this, because this can only benefit our whole community, uh, if, especially the tax base. So, um, contact, uh, Sam Schroeder, our Community Development Director, and, um, get it listed or, or posted in some manner so that it's at least on our website.
That's no problem.
Other Aldermen have questions. I'm going to, uh, let them, they go ahead, and Mayor, you can call on whoever was next.
I think Murk said he was next, so I'll get you next, Ted.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I have questions on, uh, first thing you said it was not an opportunity land, so I'm wondering why on that you would not say, why are you saying that's not an opportunity land?
Oh, trust.
Is it not any good?
No, trust me. If anything, it, the, the spin on it's not an opportunity zone is, is very easy, um, and it's very easy, and I swear, he's not, he's not paying me to say this. Um, it's an easy spin for me because, because of Sam. Um, I can shove people down Sam's throat all day long, and I know what the position is of, of this, uh, in general, I know how willing the city is to work with somebody on this, I guess, because of Sam and through Sam, and it's very easy to spin that one. People are like, well, looking for opportunity zone, yada, 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 understanding that some of these people, well over half of the people that tell me they want opportunity zone, I mean, these are multimillionaire investors from Chicago and Twin Cities and Indianapolis that really want to hide money, and I have no other way of saying that, and, uh, they really want to buy property only in opportunity zone for that reason. So, forget about them. I don't want to say they go to the wayside, I just want, they're looking for opportunity zone, they're looking at a map, they get ahold of me most likely because they're staring at an opportunity zone map that comes out from the Fed, and right across the street is opportunity zone, and if you don't zoom in far enough, and I'm not trying to sound elementary about this, it's, I guarantee you it's part of the, it's part of the reason I get a lot of these calls, because it's so close to opportunity zone that people think, why wouldn't it be, you know, so.
Okay. I understand.
Murk, before you go on, Travis or Sam, could you explain what an opportunity zone is and how they get established?
Yeah, so I was just going to jump in there too. Um, so an opportunity zone, um, was created a few years ago, um, and basically, it, it looked at certain census tracts that needed a boost in, in economy. Um, so the, the overall state, um, we actually, many municipalities submitted for opportunity zones within their current census tracts. Um, and certain, certain districts, certain census tracts were designated as an opportunity zone. This census tract, or the Gilbert, um, south of the river, is in a different census tract than north of the river, so downtown area, and that is why this site is not designated as an opportunity zone where our, our current census tract in our downtown was. So, again, that is federally designated, um, so it's not that this isn't, doesn't have opportunity, it's nothing tied to kind of the, the actual terminology of it, but it's actually a designated zone by the federal government.
Okay.
Just to re, on the, the spin on that, it is, Sam and Ed and I have talked plenty over the time here, and I've, if anything, I'll create it my sole mission to get them in, in front of you guys and let you guys create, and I'm using bunny ears here, but create opportunity for it. Sam's made it crystal clear, get them in front of me, we'll make it, we'll, we'll make it happen, we'll make it worth their while, et cetera, et cetera. So, whatever benefit they get out of the opportunity, out of opportunity zones, um, there, there's plenty of other things that we, that, and I'm saying we, as Manassas, I like using that word, we, um, plenty of other things we can do to incentivize them to come to the area, but when I say, I am being a little semantical, and I say, like, but there are people, and it's, it's, half the people that call and say opportunity zone are literally looking for opportunity zone from a tax standpoint and write-off standpoint. Um, and, and again, that doesn't mean that it's, that's, that's, that is not the majority. I'm just saying, half of the people that call and ask about opportunity zone are, I already know I'm going to lose, because they're, they're literally looking for it for that reason. As far as true opportunity goes, again, that's between you, that's, that's what I rely on Sam for, send him his way, and if there's something there, and there's an incentive that they can, that can be had by, by them through the City of Manassas or through the help of the city, um, I know Sam will make sure the opportunity is there and it's taken advantage of, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, I was actually, um, wondering that before, uh, coming to the meeting tonight, I was going to ask that question, and Sam, thank you, uh, uh, very much for, for popping in and, and explaining that. Um, and, uh, that, that's really all I had. I think, I think, to me, that was a really, really big question. Thank you, Sam.
Alderman Gady?
No, thank you, Mayor. I guess, my point of view is looking at this, you know, Travis and Ed, and then is the marketing, or maybe lack of marketing for this, this site, are you waiting for the bridge to get put in and what is happening to Bonta area before you really start marketing this spot? Because it is a really good spot, but I, I just don't see the effort on your, on your end here so far, but just thoughts on that. Are you waiting for more of the, of, of the Manassas development before you?
Nope. In fact, um, probably, sorry if anybody hears that. I was involved in, uh, I don't want to say involved, in, um, this has been, being pushed about as hard as you can push it through development and investor channels as you can. And we could, the, the only thing that I can think of that somebody would physically want to see on this site, and it's, I don't want to say pointless, but I'm going to say pointless because I can't think of a better word, would be some type of a site plan, map physically onsite or something, a big billboard that shows what might be, but what we might want to do or what somebody might want to do with it. I mean, it, who knows what it'll end up being, I guess, it would, it would be something that would cost you a couple of grand, and, uh, the guy that comes in there might sit on it and, uh, use it as his personal fishing spot. And, uh, you know, so the only thing we don't do is that, the only thing I haven't done, I guess, I would say, is physically onsite, but beyond that, I mean, you go back to the, the Lox meetings, that was three years ago, four years ago. Um, I was in that, Mayor was there, and I wasn't in it, I just, I sat in on it, I even went the, that's, I guess, when things kind of started, went to that meeting specifically to see what people wanted out of the area, what people wanted to see. It, for me, I was there not for the locks, I was there to see what the, what, uh, your constituents, I guess, wanted to see out of the area, but, I mean, from that day, I mean, that was one of the best meetings we ever, I ever, I could have possibly, possibly been a part of. Because the, uh, I mean, it, it answered so many questions. What does everybody want? Everybody wants housing. Everybody wants additional apartments, additional condos, mixed-use space, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody wants more restaurants, which is kind of obvious, I guess, but, uh, kind of confirmed what everybody, what everybody wants, but the advertising you, you don't see, I mean, unless you're looking at commercial real estate every day, um, you wouldn't see it in very many channels. Um, there'd be no, there'd be no reason for mo, for most people to see, to see the advertising through most, through most channels, um, because again, it's commercial, you're talking, um, commercial real estate developers, commercial brokers, um, investors, uh, different types, different investment groups, et cetera, et cetera. So, if there is ever anything you guys want to see, believe me, I'm open to it. I would love, I'd love to move it. Um, I could, the daily harassing phone calls from EJ could end then, and, uh, we could all be, could all be rid of it, but, um, until then, uh, if you guys have anything, anywhere you want to see it, for instance, the Manassas site, sure, let's get it up there. We can, I can have my, one of my media guys build something for that. I'll take, I'll take a look at it after we get off the call and, uh, kind of see what the format is for that, but we can get it up there, no problem. I mean, it'll take two seconds, but if there's anywhere you guys want to see it, let me know.
I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Travis, in, in the marketing, but maybe you have feedback to Sam and, and our city as what are the biggest roadblocks, or why isn't this moving, or why isn't something happening here?
Honestly, and this is blunt force honesty, all right, so, understanding, I'm prefacing this for a reason, but, um, understanding I'm from Manassas, I love Manassas in every way, shape, or form, the municipality is the primary reason it's not moving. And it's not because there's anything wrong with Manassas, it's because people can look five miles away in Appleton and just, there's, they're, they're choosing, and there, there are projects I can, I think of off the top of my head that are, that moved there over, over here from Theta hospitals, from, uh, uh, a different doctor's office, from a, a different mixed-use guy that chose an Appleton site over this one, um, in Green Bay, another one that chose Appleton over Manet, over Manassas in, in Appleton, and, um, there's a lot, and there's a lot of reasons for that, and it's, I don't think it's, it's a slap in the face by any means to say it, it's, Appleton is bent over literally backwards, and it's a more heavily populated area. They're rolling all red carpet for people and getting in, getting in front of them and, uh, in ways and just making it ridiculously advantageous to, uh, to go there with some of these smaller, with some of these smaller projects. But again, that's where I often come back. I don't, I don't lose any sleep over that, because a lot of the projects I'm talking about couldn't sustain the site like this anyway. Um, what, I hope everybody here, and me, you and me, growing up on Second Street, right across, right across the street, I don't want this to be a single office building, and I don't think that's what it's going to be. A lot of these smaller projects I'm talking about that we lost or that went somewhere else, like, sure, I would have loved to have seen a Theta here, maybe, but is that what is best from Manassas? I, I don't know. I think it's pretty clear what, what this is probably going to end up being. Ultimately, in the end, it's going to be, there are multitude of, uh, little village of commercial, commercial buildings that turn into a bunch of little offices, and, or it's going to be some type of mixed-use space, uh, apartments, condos, and, um, commercial, commercial mixed-use space. That being said, I haven't had anybody yet that's, well, we've had people that have the, that have, certainly have what it takes to do a project like that, but the people that we've literally lost out on, and that I'm trying, I'm not trying to go all the way around your answer, but I am kind of telling a story for a reason, because it's, it's, it's a fair thing for you to, it is a fair, very fair thing for you to say, and a fair question. It's, if I had to chalk it up into one singular, singular answer on those things that I think we, we've missed, it's a geogra, it's geographical, it's, it's Manassas, the population isn't, the population isn't there, drive from the highway access isn't there, um, you know, so you, there's other things to take into consideration. How long does it take to get to a major city highway? How many traffic lights are in between there? What's the population size from one way to the other? Now, me and you, I pitched the hell out of this, and I love pitching this, especially with apartments and stuff, because it's like, look, this isn't just Manassas, it's like, it's Manassas, but it's like, man, it is right on the brink of Nina, Jeff's Cross River from, you know, wanted apartments and stuff like that, I mean, you got Alton, Berks, from it all that, right down in, down to Nina, then you have the whole Manassas side of it. I mean, it's an easy pitch for the right opportunity, um, just having.
I appreciate your, um, responses, and I'll, I'll end it here with one last thought, and that would be, okay. Have the developers or anybody interested, tell them what they want to give us, and, and, and set an offer. I mean, you got Theta, you got the hospital right down the street from them, you got certain things. Appleton, Nina, Manassas, we're all close to the highway, we're all the same proximity, so I think we just need to, um, listen to who or whomever would want to bite on this, and what do they want, and we can work with them, so I appreciate the efforts. I think you're doing a great job of what you're doing, but we got to get this roll in too.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Founder, I think I missed your role in the development group here. Are, are you part of the group, or are you? Man, um,
The real estate broker.
Marketing the property?
Yes, ma'am, marketing the property, yep.
Okay. Um, so you weren't necessarily involved in the, um, acquisition of the property when that happened and the demolition?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I just want to be clear who I'm, who I'm talking to, because that changes the questions that I'll ask.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned opportunity zones before, and opportunity zones haven't been around for more than five years. So, what other obstacles do you hear from potential investors? Because this property's been available for much longer than five years.
I don't think we've been advertising it for five years. Um, however, if, again, your, your main obstacles are mostly geographical. That's not a, that's not really, it sounds like a generalized answer, but it, but it's really not. It's very, it's very specific. Uh, Mr. Gray just kind of pointed. It's very, it's very specific. Uh, Mr. Gray just kind of pointed out too, that different areas are proximity to highway are pretty the same, uh, pretty much the same. I can actually jump on board with that in some sense and I can say, yep, I actually agree with that in some sense. In other senses, I, I don't because it, it is, I mean, we, it is smack dab in the middle of, you know, I won't say Metropolis. But, uh, it, it is a decent, if, if you're a guy looking to have a lot of public advertising and getting a ton of, a ton of eyes. The traffic count on the road is not, the traffic count is not very high, so the eyeballs are not very high. So there are a lot of little micro reasons like that, that you, that you, you lose some people, you lose, it's not all. Cause a Theta care doesn't, because Theta care doesn't care what kind of eyeballs they get. They're going to get people to come there no matter what, right? The, the biggest reason you're going to unquestionably the biggest reason, and again, this is where it's like. I'm not skirting around the answer. I'm just like, I don't want it to sound like I'm saying because of city Manasha. I'm going to say it's because there are better, there have been, and it's nothing wrong with this site. There are better opportunities, other areas for a lot of the projects that have happened that haven't happened on this site. And a lot of those projects were with no other sense of the word of saying they were free. They were 100% free to that by, or given major TIP incentive or major incentive of some kind. Or they were in an oppor- or they were in an opportunity zone, um, of some kind. But if I had to point to non-opportunity zone type areas, most of those projects were given away to those investors for next to nothing. Or with a ridiculous TIP incentive that, um, too hard to pass up. And I can't sit here and point to every single specific project like I, like we've gotten in front of every single state or every single dentist office that's went up in the valley for the last four years. I mean, there's ones that I'm sure we've missed. There's ones that I'm, I think would have worked better on our sites than in others. But, uh, you look around, you look around, uh, especially Appleton is a, is a huge pain in the, pain in the butt. Uh, Grand Shoot's a pain in the butt. Um, not like we're losing droves and droves of people, uh, that are, that are going there. But if five or six or seven of them would have worked on ours and then they were given a seven acre chunk of Grand Shoot over by the airport. And I am using a specific example for right now. It's something, um, I can't come, and I, and I mean this literally. I can't compete with that when you have, you know, when you have the price, when you have the price tag and we're not giving it away for free. Um, it's, it's very frustrating, but again, I, I look at those things and I look at a site like this. And sites like this are, this is also not an excuse, but I mean, site like, sites like this sit for, can sit for decades. Like I've, I've seen them sit for 15, 15 to 20 years before they'll do anything. This will not be the case with this site by any mean, by any way, shape or form. But EJ and I sat in his office a few years ago and with all the optimism in the world. I mean, I could sit there and look in EJ's eyes and look at everyone's eyes. Ms. Nichols, I could look in your eyes and say. I am going to push the ever living hell out of it and try to move it as fast as humanly possible. But what you would look at like the Bonta RR Donnelly site, which one is somebody going to take before our site? Or Bonta RR Donnelly, the one where the city is able to work and, and more or less acquire that site? And I don't want to say give it away for free, or are they going to come spend a million plus bucks on EJ's right next door?
Travis, Travis, can I hop in there too, for just briefly? Um, and again, I know this is certainly, you guys want to hear from, uh, EJ and Travis, but just realistically talking to. This TIP district was created in 2007, 2008, 2009, we had a huge recession. That really plummeted any kind of investment for, for years and years and years. And then at the same token, we had a property adjacent to the Bonta mill that was, uh, zone industrial yet. It was marketing for sale. It was blighted. It was unknown as far as what it was going to do. We had, you know, the conversations a bit about the new Racine Street Bridge. So it was just a ton of question marks around this site as well. Um, since that time, we've, we've locked in, you know, what the bridge is going to do. We, uh, worked with the DOT on demolishing a portion of the Bonta site. Um, yes, you know, I think Travis has noted it a couple of times. The redevelopment authority did work with the local investment group to, um, pretty close. You know, give that property away, but what that does is it also gets, gives other investors a peace of mind that this is what this area is going to be. We, we constantly looked at that Bonta site as being a catalyst. Um, setting the tone for the type of development we want to do. Um, and I would say in this, these next few years, we are, I, I, I would say that this site is going to be. Going to get pushed in the next couple of years with everything happening in the conversation of the Lost Canal, the Bonta site, the Racine Street Bridge. There's pieces falling into place and over the next few years, we're going to, we're going to see a lot of activity there. And I would say from the city side of things, I'm going to be pushing Travis and EJ to be pushing this hard too. Because we know that a lot of investors are going to come in. The first question they're going to ask is, is it in a TIP district? It is in a TIP district, but that TIP district is quickly, quickly dwindling, um, with the closure coming in 2034. So we really need over the next two, three years to get a site developed, uh, that site developed. If there's going to be any conversation of a TIP and we're really going to be pushing that hard. And I know I call these guys oftentimes and, and, uh, and poke, poke them a little bit, uh, and, and see where they're at. So, um, I just wanted to pinpoint that as well.
Can I jump in from a historical perspective? So Alderman Nichols, I, I don't want to repeat stuff that Sam has said, but we purchased the property in 2004. It took us four years to, uh, negotiate a, uh, development agreement with the city, which was finally signed in 2008. On the, on the eve of, um, the Great Recession. So during the course of that period of time, it took four years to demolish the mill. Now, this is the, this is kind of the trade-off, right? So in Nina with Glanfelter, you had a site that was 20% smaller than Gilbert. They put four and a half, five million dollars into it and they got it done in a year. And Asha, with the investments that the city made and with the investments that we made, put a little less than a million dollars to tear that entire site down that was 20% bigger, but it took a heck of a long time to do it. Because it wasn't able to be done in a traditional TIP fashion and it was done, uh, on the cheap. Which was great because it saved everybody money, but the point is that it took a long time to get that done. And then you ended up in a recession where credit was very, very tight. And if you look at the development that has gone on in the Fox River Valley over the course of the last six or seven years. It really is only in the course of the last six or seven years as these credit markets have been, uh, rebounding. And credit has been flowing again, that a lot of these big projects, certainly River Heath and some of the other ones in Green Bay have been done. And in the larger cities, um, with the comprehensive plans that they have, developers often went there first. And it is the first single thing that's being addressed, which is the, the underproduction of housing that we have in the area. There is a huge, huge deficit in housing in the Fox River Valley. And a great deal of it seems to be in apartment buildings, which is why you see in Nina, uh, outside, the outskirts of Nina, that huge apartment development complex going up. And River Heath and Appleton and all of those department, those apartment developments. It's because there's a, there's a huge demand for that type of residential living. And the residential credit markets have opened up over the course of the five or six, seven years. But the commercial markets and the commercial lending has only just started. And only just started about 24 months ago to release, to do more commercial properties. There's an exception and the exception is the office building that went up in Manasha with the development group that put, uh, the office building up where the old hotel was. But that was done in spite of the credit markets. That was done in spite of the recession. That was done in spite of what was going on in terms of lending in the nation. And even now, um, commercial buildings and the need for commercial property was starting to loosen. There was starting to be more creation of that, but then COVID hit. And now the markets are uncertain again because they don't know whether or not there's going to be a need for commercial office space. And in fact, there's a glut of commercial office space in the valley. So to suggest that this site would be something that would be, uh, attractive to commercial development of any major sort in terms of another large office building, that would have to be somebody like the development group that did the tower in Manasha in spite of the market. In contrast to what's going on in the market, it is likely to be apartments or condominiums, which are in high demand and which there is liquid capital available out there to build those types of things in conjunction with the cities, uh, working with the groups. But there has been a series here. So certainly there are some issues with the site. There are some unique things about the site that might make it more or less difficult to market. There are some. Drawbacks with my beloved city of Manasha in terms of some things that Appleton has done or some things that Green Bay has done or some things that Nina has done. Um, and then you've got this damned recession that hit, uh, and then COVID in terms of what it did in terms of sites. There are lots of sites in Nina, there are lots of sites of Appleton, in Appleton that are still vacant, that have been vacant for a long, long time. And lots of sites in the city of Manasha. So you have all of these things that have worked together to make it difficult to, um, to make it difficult to have this run. But in the meantime, the mill is gone. The site is green. We've managed to work with the city to create a beautiful, um, uh, riverwalk path. It's going to, that will connect and will be connecting with the, the rest of the riverwalks around the area. So, and, uh, because of DOT's action on the Racine Street Bridge and the city's ability to take advantage of that with the Bonta site. I, I think as Sam does, that finally, after all of this time. This has finally become a section of the city where energy will be flowing, uh, where it hasn't in the past. I mean, you know, it's unfortunate, you know, you guys have an opportunity here with the Brin site and what's going to happen with the Brin site. But that is not long-range planning. It's because the damn thing burned out. Um, and so there's, there's a lot of chance and causation that occurs that's unpredictable here. And I, that, at least that's my historical perspective on it. From 2008, it was seven years after 2008, only 2015, when anybody was doing anything with regard to development and commercial zones and things that were happening in the Fox River Valley. And that's kind of when Travis got started here. Um, and that's when we really started trying to earnestly market the property because the credit wasn't available. The cities didn't have the money to be able to support the tips and the banks weren't lending to developers because everything was so uncertain in the markets.
Yes, and I just know that opportunity zones haven't been in existence all that long. And so I wanted to address that. My next question is, um. For two people who are, um, you know, mentioned they're from Manasha, Mr. Founder grew up here. And geography is an obstacle. What is being done to overcome that obstacle? I mean, it can't just be a non-starter. We have to create value and, and work through that obstacle with developers. So.
It's a.
Cause we can't change geography. We can't change it.
Yep. And that's, and, and it, it really is a simple answer, uh, without me going down some long path. Um, it's really a matter of having the right buyer. Um, we're not going to get a trucking company. So again, just dismissing, dismissing the exaggeration of me saying it's not going to be a trucking company. But it's not going to be a trucking company that wants to be right off the highway, right? That needs easy access on and off Highway 41 or something like that, of course. Um, it really is a matter of just having that right purchaser, that right development group. Um, I'll parrot what Sam, Sam and Ed are a little bit more eloquent than I am tonight, apparently. The, but they both said it very, very, very well. Uh, it's in a, a position right now where. I legitimately for, for a property like this, I've got more inquiries on it than any property like this. And I've told Sam this a year ago, two years ago, it's always got more activity than I ever anticipated it would ever get. I would expect to get a call on this every month, not a dozen plus calls a month, even going into a third and fourth year of marketing and advertising it. It gets a lot of inquiries, um, because it's a great piece of vacant property. And the minute you put waterfront on something, everybody assumes they're going to call. And I'm going to tell them that it's, um, going to be given to them for nothing. And if, as long as they develop it and they do X, Y, Z with it, and it's just not the case. It's actually a pretty rare piece of property that is privately owned. Um, and I think if you look historically on the, especially the waterfront properties that have been sold in the Fox Cities over the last five years, I think what you will find is that the, um, preponderance of them were municipally owned or municipality acquired to create huge opportunity for somebody to do it. I'm not saying that's the play here. I'm not even making a comparison, but historically speaking, I mean, that is the, the case. People are coming in, even the old folks home development in, in Appleton. I mean, almost every one of them that I can think of off the top of my head was not private, was not a private sale either. Um, it's, it was a municipality acquiring something and then basically giving it away. And I don't think that's the play here. I, I really don't. You've got the RR Donnellys and, and again, Sam and Ed already said it very, very eloquently. The circumstances surrounding the site right now are becoming more and more ideal by the minute. Um, and I, and I mean that the minute Kip and them put a shovel on the ground on that other site, I, I got giddy. I was like, yes, yes, yes. This is exactly what needed to happen. People needed to see the movement. On the other side of the street, there's been amazing movement downtown, downtown Appleton, including even with Brim. I mean, it's granted, it's just, uh, you know, nothing right now, but it's got the site plant, you know, it's got the site maps there and everything. I mean, it's something people can conceptualize and, and get behind and get excited about and, uh, cross the street by us here. I mean, it's, uh, I guess to answer the question directly, it's, I think the circumstances are. The circumstances are coming. We haven't, we just haven't had the right buyer yet. I would not be surprised if a buyer that I've talked to in the past or a group I've talked to in the past ends up purchasing this property and developing it themselves. But two or three or four years ago, it was not the right time or it wasn't the right group. Even right now, there's a whole new animal in the, there's a whole new issue coming about in construction. And construction prices are up 60% over the last 24 months. And it is a, it's a problem. I'm not saying it's going to, you know, it's going to stop us even more, but it's like, we're with COVID and everything. I mean, there, there are a myriad of excuses or a myriad of things that you can point to and say like, that, that slowed, that slowed something like this down when you have to make an initial million dollar plus investment at, at the offset, um, compared to other sites that you can acquire or, um, have major incentives to them right, right, right off the bat. But those objections are. Those objections are very easily overcome, whether it's, whether it's me getting them in front of Ed. But whether it's me dealing with them myself, or whether it's me getting them in front of Ed or Sam. I mean, the combination of the three of us. I guess what I would say is I've never let, we have never let one of those, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm using it, but I don't want it to become the. Straw of like this is why it's not working because I keep bringing up the geography and it's being, it's not a statement. It's because there's better, there's been better opportunity around it most likely, or people saw the other sites as a better, a better investment at the time. Which truthfully, in a lot of cases, it would be about, they would be a better investment at that time, which is why it's like right now. The circumstances surrounding the site are becoming more and more ideal by the, by the minute. But at no point is, is somebody looking at me saying, well, Mr. Founder, we. We, you know, it's just, it's not close enough to a McDonald's, you know, or it's not close enough to a, and it's like, look. There's some of, some of them that just don't work because they need to be closer to a highway or whatever. But, you know, that's a, you know, a low, a low percentage. Objections like that are, are pretty easily overcome and, and I cram people as hard as I can to go back to the city. Like, look, Manasha is hungry for this. Manasha is hungry for this. Look at what they're doing here. Look what they're doing here. And I point people to that all the time. And to be honest with you, it hasn't been enough at this point to get people to want to jump in and, and just pick up the phone and call Sam. I, all the confidence in the world of getting people to Sam and letting Sam sell Manasha. And I mean that, I, I really do. He does a great job at selling it when, when him and I are together and, uh. He has great ideas. We will get people in front of Manasha. It's a matter of, I don't, nobody wants to hear this, this word, this wording. But it's a matter of time at this point. It is a ticking time bomb before your Kip's group acquires it. I mean, you're looking at a group that right there that may end up acquiring it themselves or may end up, uh, purchasing it themselves. But it's drawing a, a lot of attention right now because of everything you guys are doing with the city, what you guys have done through the DOT. And with the bridge and, and again, even what you're doing with Brim and even what you're doing across the street. All of those things are in conjunction are going to lead probably, as Sam said, the next few years. I think in the next 24 months or less, you'll see the property acquired or, or you'll see the property purchased by somebody with, um, the intent to develop it. And I do think it will be, there's a high probability it will be mixed-use commercial or mixed-use, uh, apartment condo. And maybe some, maybe some commercial use. But probably higher.
One more question. I, thank you. One more question I have is, um. The community views this area sort of as one site. Um, but we all know that there's two different ownership parts in that riverfront, on that riverfront. So as things move forward. So as things move forward. What is your interest? In making sure that. Whatever happens on that riverfront is sort of.
Conforming.
Uniform, for lack of a better word, I mean, it doesn't need to be all the same, but yet, you know, conform with. What's happening there.
My intention, or at least my personal intention. Is to be practicing law in that office building until I'm eighty seven years old. I'm not interested in building a strip mall, I'm not interested in having an empty, ugly. Thing sitting there, I have been staring out the back window of that office building for sixteen years. Thinking about what it would look like and how great it could be. And I'm not interested in adding. To the decrepitude that exists in certain aspects of Annap Street, I think it is a compliment. To downtown and to the riverfront over time, or it ought to be, and it ought to be uniform and it ought to flow together. And it ought to be a place where people can live and then walk to downtown and then come back and do some small shopping and enjoy the green spaces. It would, it should be a place for people to. To have an apartment or a condominium and be able to walk down onto the point. Now that they've destroyed it, but I'm sure they're going to put it back after the bridge is done and play chess on the picnic table for God's sakes. And walk back and get a sandwich and have that kind of. Have when you walk around downtown Appleton right now. That's what I want, I do not want to have crap in my backyard. Um, and so I wouldn't be worried about that, I mean, I am not interested in selling. To the tackiest person that's going to pay the price, I'm interested in selling to somebody that's going to continue to unite that area and then. I would, no, I mean. My personal opinion about how it should look from Saint Pats. To the picnic table on the point is neither here nor there, I'm not on the council and I'm not a part of the planning process. But it would be nice to have that entire side of the river as a single unified whole that the city can be proud of, and I certainly would like to be. I certainly like to contribute to that, or at least not create a situation in which I screw it up.
Thank you.
Hello.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Edmund, I appreciated your words, I agree, we have enough storage garages, car washes and strip malls. We do not need those senior living, something like island shores, that make it happen, lower the price a little bit, but get something like that. No storage garages, car washes or strip malls that sit empty, thank you very much Edmund and Travis. Shake his, shake, shake his stick and get moving on it.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Last few years, I think you're probably staying at home in your living room since we went live on TV, but it was always nice seeing you now there. And, uh.
Hey, listen, I saw you on the bridge last week, looking at the, looking at, uh, what they were doing over there, I didn't know that you could see over the railing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was, uh, my brother can. But, uh, I've been doing a, a photography project on that, so, uh, and, and that's coming along really well, it's just, uh. Amazing, uh, watching those guys work over there and, and the twenty first century, thinking back to the eighteen hundreds when the. Uh, my fellow Irishmen, uh, duck it by hand, so it, it's been an interesting process. Appreciate you guys here tonight and, uh. Just wanted to ask you about when Data Clark was moving was. Wanted to move to the far west of the valley and thank goodness they didn't, but, uh. Uh, I know Nina had plans for a rehabilitation. Center there, a lot. They don't want to keep you in a hospital very long and rehab centers, so it's. Start, instead of putting in a nursing home, more of a, of a, of a nursing home that, that focuses on. Uh, after surgery and things like that, and also there was a talk back then about Data Clark. Uh, maybe, uh, the veterans, uh, looking at that to make it into a, a veteran's home or rehabilitation center too, so. I just wondered if either of you, uh, heard anything about that or was aware of that.
Yep, actually, well, I don't want to be specific, um. Data is. A frequent, it has a couple of different representatives. Um, that, and I, I don't know who knows this or who doesn't know it, but. Data has a couple of representatives, uh, just like. Oshkosh Corp does and a lot of big corporations like that that are constantly acquiring. Um, industrial real estate, uh, all over, all over the area. Uh, so it's actually very easy to stay in contact with them, the Veterans Administration, um. I am with the CDSO, I am a part of Alliance Club, I am a veteran myself, so I, I actually have. The driven this into that community a bit, I can't say specifically that I was aware of a veteran and I'm just being honest, I, I don't. Can't say specifically I was aware of a veteran rehabilitation center. Um, but I am very, very vested in the veteran community personally and this. I don't go to the VA and some of these other things, you know, to talk about commercial real estate, you know, it's a lot of old. Old guys, I like to talk about nothing, but commercial real estate is usually not at the top of the, top of the, uh. Uh, the, the calendar for, you know, what we're going to talk about, top of the itinerary. Um, however, specifically with data, and I do think it's a, I like using it, I'd like to use it as a specific example because. I like people to know that it is easy to say in front of those guys, it's, it's, uh, it's not something, they're, they're not slipping past. I guess it's really easy to think about it like QuickTrip. If you ever wanted, if you guys had a great site to put up a QuickTrip, like say at the bottom of Racine Street, for instance, or something like that, um. There, uh. If you ever had a good place to put a QuickTrip or something, it's actually pretty easy to get in contact with, uh, QuickTrip's, uh. Uh, people that literally case these sites and they decide, just like a Starbucks or whatever, they look at. Geographics and look at all this stuff, they look at traffic count, they look at how much space you have to park and. How easy it is to come in and out and yada, 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 same thing with data and, uh, uh, not just data, um. Ascension, uh, is another good one, um, I, we've, Ascension's been on our list from our quote unquote, uh. You know, list from day one. Um, but they're selling everything they possibly can right now, they're not building anything, they're. They're not building anything on sites like this right now, they're consolidating all their small offices, building mega offices and whatever. One example, but data, because it got brought up again, just to. Uh, put the cherry on this, I guess, shut up, but the, uh, it's actually very easy to get in front of people like that. Because they have usually teams or a person or two or three, um, that are in charge of. Guys like me sending them sites all day, begging them to buy the land and, uh, you know, develop their site. Um, we've been in front of them for a long time, I've had communications with them. Um, nothing, nothing really of note, it's usually a, yeah, thanks, we'll. Take a peek at it and I can shove it down their throat all I want with, well, somebody, um. Stan brought it up earlier, the, uh, the videos and stuff, I mean, these are all things that are. Are all sent in, uh, uh, email communication and stuff like that, but, uh, Mr. Taylor is the, because you brought it up. Um, but specifically, yeah, we. I don't want to say it's impossible that they, you know, it's. Unlikely that sites use for stuff like that, but we're, we're definitely getting in front of them, I guess, is, uh, is the short answer to stuff like that.
Um.
I thank you, and also, uh.
Go ahead.
Pardon me.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just, I was just saying, uh. Uh, that's about from Saint Pats to the, to the point by the picnic table. And we did save the picnic table, so you know that, I think.
I, I saw it, yes.
Okay, and, uh. Uh. Uh, looking at that and putting something on us, uh. Looking at your property has, when, when you've had entertained people looking at the property. Have they asked what they're building is across the river that's all bombed out and, and I mean, it looks pretty bad, uh. Have they, or on the, or on the new truck people we have at the other end of the. The property there, if we put the trail in, so I'm just wondering if those things have come up.
There's a, there's a specific reason, and I'm. I'm glad this came, I'm glad it came up and I'm not because it. There's a specific reason I haven't brought that up tonight, it's because it's probably the easiest excuse I can give you. As to why it hasn't, um, but it has been asked a couple of different times now. Are people saying anything? I don't like to bring that up because that is an objection that I do feel we can overcome. It is an objection that I feel like we've done a good job of, uh, explaining to people. I can't get rid of that mill across the way and I can't get rid of Sunoco right there and I swear that it is, right? But those are specific examples, and again, I'm. I'm kind of glad it came up and I'm kind of not, but I specifically don't bring that up because it's the easiest way in the world for me to just be like, well. Sorry, guys, we got this, uh, Sunoco cross street looks like crap and we got the giant mill, you know, nobody wants it, truth is, is those are objections that. Are overcome and those are actually the primary ones that I usually say, look. Talk with Sam, let's talk to the city, let's talk to whatever, don't let that be the reason that you're not jumping outside. But unquestionably, yes, it's a thing, there's no doubt about it, in it. If I had to put a percentage on it, nine out of ten times it comes up, there's no. Question, people go out and they stand there and the guys have done an amazing job developing the site. The trail is fantastic, you always see people out there walking their dogs. Fishing, et cetera, et cetera, it's always an easy showing. It's always easy to FaceTime, uh, with, uh, I FaceTimed with so many different groups. Um, or Skype with so many different groups out there that aren't going to fly up from somewhere and we just like go walk to site and try to get them up here. Um, send them pictures, drones, video and stuff like that, but inevitably. Eventually I have to turn to the point where, you know, they see a million square foot monstrosity across the way and they see. Broken shambled glass on Sunoco and, uh, a bunch of, uh, sitting fifty two foot trailers over there. Now, again, those are things that I'm, I have no problem overcoming, like, look. We'll take care of it sort of thing, like just let us. Get here, we'll deal with it, get in Sam's office, we'll deal with it, sit in front of Ed, we'll deal with it, we'll find a way. Um, I'm glad you brought it up and that, but I, again, I don't want to stand on that as the sole excuse. For why a site like this hasn't moved, I still think everything I said before, the site is poised right now. To move at a time where this is, this is the time, this is, this makes sense now. That's always going to be an objection we're going to have to overcome, it's going to continue to be an obstacle. But it's not, I don't want to ever say that that's the, uh, the sale to why the site would or would not move. I think there's enough incentive that the city of Manash and all of you have made it even more abundantly clear to me tonight that, uh. You guys really, really, really do want to work with somebody, I mean, and again, Sam has. Always been driving that down my, down our throats and always made that very clear. Um, but. I mean, I'd love to just like, sat on the, sat with the alderman, you know, a week and a half ago and got yelled at for a while and they, they really hurry up and come and buy it. Um, but I, I don't think that's the, the say all, but it's. Yes, nine out of ten people that have looked at this site have brought it up in the first five minutes of looking at it, so it's, yeah, and I think it would be kind of. Irresponsible to say it has nothing to do with it, but I don't think it's a reason that everybody's just walking away from it either.
I would, I would also, I would also say that, you know, there's a lot of. There's a lot of new development that's gone on all over the place from Milwaukee to Green Bay in old industrial areas and to a certain extent, I don't know that it's necessarily an impediment. Um, you know, the island shores across from Nina Paper, you look at what's happened along the river in Green Bay, even what happened, what's happened along the river in, in Appleton. I don't know that Sunoco itself is necessarily an impediment to that, and I don't think that people. Would have such an objection of living across to that, I, you know, I think the, I think the old woodenware company is a little worse than some other sites and that maybe is something that needs to be addressed. But I certainly don't think it's an impediment to the project. Um, I don't tell people that, that Sunoco lets the steam off of its boiler. Uh, every fourteen days, I, I try to schedule when they're not doing that, but other than that, I don't see it as a major problem.
Exactly, exactly, well, I, so you know, um, July twenty second, uh, two thousand fourteen was the. Fiftieth anniversary of the woodenware fire and I brought it up to the council and showed them the pictures and. If we are, we have our trail system there and we need to clean that building up because it does, the Sunoco building, that's fine, uh, I think, uh. Uh, like, uh, Travis made note of, uh. Or, or maybe I'd get about, they need a paper building, I think that's fine, but the bombed out building, the city certainly has to move forward and. And at least get those windows. Uh, it's just to clean up the facade or something. Travis, on, uh, on a marketing end of it, I've always said that the city needs its own marketing department and. I certainly appreciate you attending the, the workshop. Uh, that we had a few years ago and, uh, if we ever put together a. Marketing commission or something, I hope, uh, a Manasha boy would be interested in, uh, uh, sitting on that commission.
I would love to, it's a fantastic idea, but I, and I will say that you're. And again, I'm, I'm not paid and I'm not paid to say this, but, uh, so far. Mr. Schrader sitting right there is one of the biggest cheerleaders I've ever met from the city of Manasha and does a great job of marketing. For you guys, and again, he's not paying me to say that, but. Um, he's a huge advocate and for obvious reasons, it's job security, I suppose, but, uh. Beyond that, uh, he really does do a great job of, uh, of advertising and marketing for you guys. Um, to the extent of his position that, to the extent his position can, I guess, at this point too, so. If you guys ever expand, I'd love to, I'd love to be there if you guys ever expand beyond that.
It would always be nice for him to put like minds together on the cable, just to have a good brainstorming session, so I appreciate that. I keep you in mind for that, uh, Adam Travis, thank you for your time.
Alderman Gotti.
Yeah, I'd just like to, thank you. Make more of a comment than a question and I appreciate both of your. Um, inputs and from a landmarks perspective, I just want to say you have one of the most beautiful. Structures on that side of the river. But when you're talking about dilapidated windows and things on the other side of the river. I think the element of your eyebrow windows on your building should. Get some attention before, um, they start to. Be too costly to repair.
Yeah, I, I'll give you the quote, holy cow, my goodness sakes, yes, I know, they're one of a kind, they were handmade.
Well, with that, I want to thank both EJ and Travis for coming this evening. And we'll be in touch and keep working on marketing the site and hopefully we have a big announcement in the near future.
And I'll get some, uh, video stuff and whatnot to Sam and let him disseminate as he sees fit, so you guys, uh, Stan, I know you wanted it and, uh. Whoever he wants to get that type of stuff to, so, and I'll work with him, I get, uh, Mr. Seven and Child will get, uh, with Sam on, uh, getting it up on the website as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Sure. So item two is. Being a Mash of Fire and their water rescue, I just, knowing that we've had three saves near Jefferson Park. We wanted to give Kevin a opportunity to. Come forward and just show you a little bit about what we've been doing and why we've been doing it and. I do have your PowerPoint here, Kevin, if you want to share it or if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead and share it, Mayor, I have a copy with me here, I'll just kind of read off it, so as long as everybody else can see it, I'm good on my end. So just put this together just briefly, it's not, uh, not a ton of slides, but just kind of give an overview. Of some of the services we, we provide with our, um, with water rescue, so. Um, again, the mayor contacted me, uh, last week and asked if we could, uh, put this together just to. Um, give you an overview and then also just if there was any questions or just a brief, uh, conversation about the couple rescues we've had lately. So, um, just looking at this, uh, second slide, just some of the services of the water rescue. Uh, we provide open water. Ice rescue, swift water because we have dams in each city, uh, we do shore based. Uh, rescue, which is what we did the other night, uh, on open water and on ice. And then, of course, we also have our dive team, so. And then, uh, the different. Um, tools that we use for water rescue, it's, which was on page three. We have, uh, we have our boat thirty two, which is our boat that we mainly use in the winter time. And that's at Station Thirty Two. And then we have our boat thirty five, which is, um, we keep at Station Thirty Five and that's a quick deployment. Uh, type watercraft in which, uh, I think it was like three years ago, I, I wrote a grant with Capital Credit Union. Um, and they, um, awarded us the grant and we purchased the boat, the motor. And then, um, the mechanics at Station Thirty Five actually made the. and then the mechanics at Station 35 actually made the trailer for it, so. Yes, yes.
Could you, could you tell us what, for the public too, what stations those are, the numbers, I don't think a lot of people are familiar with, thank you.
Sure, oh, sure, so Boat 32, which is Station 32, that's the main station in Nina on Colombian Avenue. And then Boat 35 is the Manasha Station, the main one by the library. And then those are the two stations that we keep all our, our water craft because it's, it's the closest, they're the closest to the, to the water, so those are the two stations. Marine 3 then is kept at Station 32, but it's swapped out, so right now it's sitting at our south side Nina Station because we have room to store it in the winter and then when the ice goes out, then we swap Marine 3 with the Boat 32, which is our ice boat, so. And then we just have like a couple of quick deploy tools, we have our rapid deployment craft, which is, looks like a big banana, but it floats and it, it allows us to get right up into the spillway up by each dam. And then we do have the Homatro board, it looks like a, like a paddleboard. So it does float and then if we have patient, we can lock them into that board while we pull them out of the water and that's what they used the other night outside the buoy 100. So those are the, those are the five different pieces of tools that we use for, for our water rescue. Boat 32 and Marine 3, those are paid for by the county. They're all maintained, so if there's any kind of issue with them, the Sheriff's Department takes care of all the repairs, so. Any questions with our water craft?
Chief?
Yes.
Chief, I just want to really congratulate you and your department, I'm not just being fuddy duddy here. You got to put yourself in these people's shoes when you went out there and you saved literally this guy's life from the snowmobile. I mean, if we did not have this equipment and if we didn't have the training and your staff, that guy would be dead today, there's no doubt in my mind. You guys did an excellent job. The funny thing is, is when great things like this happen in our community, the media forgets about it. And I, if, so if they're not going to do it, I want to tell you, I'm very proud of you and your guys for saving that guy's life and you're all heroes. I don't like calling firefighters heroes because it's their job, but in this case, you're heroes, you saved that guy's life because without you guys, he'd be dead.
Thank you. So then on the last page. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention that if, if, if any aldermen have not been over to Station 35, I, I was actually over there in the beginning when they first got that boat and, and you can literally pick that up, that's how light it is. And, and, and without the, the motor on it, of course, and that board that Chief is talking about that they rescued, it, it's unbelievable, I, I asked firefighters what that is and they showed me and told me how they use it and with the rope and it's just phenomenal, it's just a piece of board that's so wide and so long, but that's what they, they used to pull that person away. So if you ever get a chance to get over there, I would encourage all the aldermen to, to go over there and, and ask them, but I am so, that, that, that boat though, you can literally pick it up, that, that's how light it is, light it is, it's just unbelievable, so I just wanted to share that quick, Chief, thank you.
Thank you. So the page that you're seeing now was the February 13th, that was the opening day of sturgeon spearing. Truck drove too close to buoy 100 and fortunately, he drove into the area that was shallow enough where it just left the top of his vehicle exposed and he was able to crawl out and hop on top, but you can see a lot of the ropes and different tools that they used in that rescue to pull him off the vehicle. Then the last page shows you that evening of February 23rd, so 10 days later, there was two snowmobilers that were riding around on the lake and the first one was able to jet across open water to the ice, but the second one was not and there was a lot of things that happened that the stars aligned for this person. One, the neighbor was outside or a neighbor out on Lake Road heard him and called 911 right away. And then the, the captain at Station 35 by the library made the decision to respond to Lake Road instead of responding to Jefferson Park, so that might sound weird that they wouldn't respond to where the call came in, but for a water rescue, we're always looking at what's the nearest boat landing or where that person is located, so just because the call came in there doesn't mean they would respond, they're, they're, you know, we could, we could go to Jefferson Park, we could go to Waverly Beach, we could go somewhere else to launch. But he made the decision to go to Lake Park or to Lake Road and they did a shore-based rescue from shore, so there was four firefighters on the engine that night and two of them got suits on, went to the rescuer with our, we had a thousand feet of rescue rope. They took the Homatro board out to him and then the other two firefighters, once they had him connected, they pulled him in from shore, they used about 850 feet of rope, rescue rope to get him. But when the two, when the captain and the firefighter got out to him, he said if they would have been 15, 30 seconds later, he was going to let go because he was only holding on to the ice with his chin, his hands were, he was already hypothermic and he wasn't able to hang on to the ice any longer, so he was in about 11 feet of water where he went in, so he wasn't going to be able to stand there, so. Like I said, all the stars aligned, they went to the right place, to the exact place they needed to, the neighbor called, so once they got him to shore, they loaded him up with, into the ambulance and then transported him to Saney's, so he, just talking with the Gold Cross paramedics, it sounds like he was in the hospital maybe for a day and then he was released, but they did a great job and, and you know, it's, it like, like Alderman 7X said, it's a lot of the training, it always seems like that's what we do. Police and fire, train, train, train and those are the days that you, you walk away smiling knowing that just you, you put a thousand hours to do something that you may only do once. But it was that one, you know, it's a high, a high risk, low frequency type call and they did it, that's, that's what we do and, and again, no, everybody just does their job, just like Alderman 7X said, but I, I appreciate the training, the time that they put in, their expertise on what needs to be done and they, they do it and, and do it well, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Oliver Nichols has a question.
Yes, thank you, Chief, thank you for sharing what happened this, these last few weeks and hearing that story definitely takes my breath away for just a second. And it also got me thinking that something always happens around buoy 100 every, every year. And there have been other incidents in the past, no matter the season, open water, ice, it doesn't matter and I think I heard somewhere not too long ago that Manasha in particular, 35% of our boundaries is water. And so just as the fire department does fire safety, public education in the schools, have we ever considered water safety education as a city? And what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, something we've talked about at the station here over the last couple of weeks and it may be something we do with Park and Rack or something we do with Public Works to put signs out. You know, we talked about putting something out there, but the water and the, you know, it fluctuates so much, one minute it's froze and then, you know, if you put something out there, the next day it melts, what happens to, you know, the signs out there and I don't know if we're able to do that because it's a, you know, waterway governed by the DNR, whoever governs that, but there are other areas that we could post things or set up some type of, of radio or Facebook posts to, you know, make sure people are aware of that, you know, of that area, so, but yes, we have, we have discussed that.
And I think I'm thinking of water safety in even a broader, more general sense because drowning is a big problem in, in the country, thousands of people die every year from drowning. And given that we have so much water in our community, it might be something that we could talk about, so I'll give you a call sometime.
Yeah, I know we did a few years ago, put a video together. One of the students from UW, UW Oshkosh Fox Valley now, but they put a video together about ice rescue safety and water safety about wearing life vests and, and caution and I know it was out and there were CDs that were made and passed around, I know a lot of the fishing clubs have picked that up and passed them out. But that is also an option, we do have that video that we could, you know, get out into the community or use as a training tool as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oliver and Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, when that first truck went through, it was a couple of days later, the truck was still in the water and my wife and I were at the boat landing at Jefferson Park looking south and it was not just around sunset and I see a couple of snowmobilers coming from the south and and once I saw the reflection of their headlights on the water, I got out my phone and I dialed 91 and I waited and they were very close to the edge and they stopped, they got their bearings and then they headed east and, and then went to Waverly Beach and I think what happens with people is that, you know, we're always looking from the shoreline out and not too often are, people are on the lake and they get disoriented with the shoreline and they don't know the markers or the shorelines and it seems to, that seems to be, that seems to be the problem. And I always believe in technology and as I talked about with getting a drone and you and I had talked and I understand that the police department and the fire department have a great relationship with their drone and we do have infrared on that drone and I hope in the future, especially for night rescues, both the winter and summer, that that drone can be deployed and as a tool to pick up the heat signatures to aid the fire department in faster rescues and, and especially if something would happen to one of our, our members, we would have that extra, if you will, eye in the sky and identification where, where people are, especially if there's multiple people in the water, so I, I really glad that that partnership between the police and fire is, is maturing and I hope that they can continue to work in tandem, especially for these water rescues and I echo Alderman 7X sentiments about the situation and, and your team and their training. And also, I look at when the Theona Clark helicopter takes off, it's around $10,000. When the ice, ice salvage people come out and take these vehicles out of the water, it's about $3,500. And I really think for, because this costs us a lot of money for non-residents, if there's a rescue done like this, I, I think there should be a fee because there's a fee for everything else for, for these situations and we all know that we absorb the prices, but we serve and we serve everybody with this department and we don't ask are you, with the guy hanging on the edge of the ice by his chin, are you from the town or from the city? You know, it's, it's excellent that we, we have this service, but it does come at a cost and this body is always looking to absorb costs and, and and save the taxpayers money, so I think that's something we need to look at here in the near future too, but again, hats off to your crew, great, great rescue.
Thank you.
Oliver and Gotti.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. This is why you, okay, we budget money for certain things, you know, fire and rescue and I think he cloned as an awesome job of keeping stuff under budget and when he comes to the the different departments or the different cities looking for budgeting dollars for training and other things, this is what he's looking for, he's staying within his budget, he's doing what he has to do to keep people safe, so us as aldermen instead of always sometimes cutting everything that they want to spend, a life is worth a lot, so I really appreciate the dollars spent, the training spent and the effort that you do for the cities of Nina and Manasha.
Thank you.
And seeing no one else, thank you for the, for sharing with us tonight, Chief, we'll move on to the COVID update with Director McKenna. And we'll see if I can figure out how to stop sharing my screen and allow hers to share.
Not quite yet.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So just give you brief updates for tonight. So our case counts as of today are 1,707, I mean, 1,771 laboratory confirmed, 201 probable, 37 active, 1,009 16 recovered and 8,085 negative. We've had an uptick in some hospitalizations since our last two-week period of a total of 100 individuals that have been hospitalized and we've had 19 fatalities. Some good news to share, the number of confirmed cases has dropped from 28 in the last two-week period to 22 cases. We have seen the case rate drop now from 159.9 to 125.6 cases per 100,000 population and our activity level currently is still at the high range, so looking at our chart over the duration, actually, this is since August, but we can go further back. When we had our highest point, which was over 1,500 cases per 100,000, it's really dropped pretty nicely and has continued to drop now to a level we were at in August of 2020, so we've seen this come down, however, note that it is still high. We're just so accustomed to being in that critically high and very high area that now that we're down into the high area, it feels like it's, it's not very high at all and in actuality, there is still circulating virus, we have a ways to go. A couple of things I wanted to share with you is looking at the cases in the last two weeks. So what we're seeing is a little bit of an uptick in the number of cases in the under 20 age group and we did a little digging on that and found that one person was 18, several people were ages six to 17 and we have none under age six. Looking even deeper, we did identify that there was a party probably mid-February where we had an outbreak and so that's what's contributing to these cases and I think it's a stark reminder to everybody that the virus is still circulating, that masking, distancing, staying away from crowds, hand hygiene, all of that. The virus is still with us, we still have The virus is still with us. We still have to use those strategies. And the vaccine isn't widely available yet. So even though it feels like we've been coming down quite a bit, there is circulating virus. The other age group that I'm keeping my eye on is this 40 to 60 age group. And um, you know, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in that as well. I haven't identified why that's the case yet. Um, but uh I would suspect a lot of it is due to, again, the relaxation of some of the mitigation strategies that we know work. Uh, because, you know, people, people are um wanting to get out and be with each other and and we have to just be really cautious about that. Some good news again, our seven-day case incidence or average daily case rate has gone down to 7.3 cases per 100,000 per day. Our goal is to get under one. Our seven-day average test positivity, um, and I know you've looked at this with me long enough to remember that we had um positivity up near 30% which is, you know, in the red zone. And now we're in the yellow. We want to just get under five. We're almost there. The World Health Organization uses 10% positivity rate on a daily average. Um, we're at 6.8. One of the things that does concern concern me a bit is that we want to continue having people tested if they're experiencing symptoms. So our goal is to do 28 tests per day. We're down with that. And there could be a couple of reasons for that. One might be that we do have people with less symptoms, so they're not availing themselves for a test. Um, but we do want to encourage people who are experiencing symptoms or who are close contacts to have a test. Our hos- hospital capacity, we look at the inpatient beds that are occupied and while this is high, 96.9, it is not COVID patients that are occupying inpatient beds as much as it is just general um hospitalizations. Uh, 85.3% of ICU beds are occupied and only 2.9 beds are occupied with patients that have COVID. We have been uh able to contact everybody within 48 hours uh if they are positive and we've been able to con- uh work with the, I'm sorry, we have been able to do all close contacts within 48 hours and all positive cases within 24. And if we look at our metrics, um, it's telling us that, you know, we're very near this moderately high range. And that would be um moderately high for the state and Harvard calls this the yellow zone. And then that allows us to do a little bit more as far as uh getting together, as far as travel, our indoor gatherings, outdoor gatherings, events. Uh, but again, we'd want to limit the size and keep a close eye on all of the community transmission rates. Um, again, testing is available. We have a testing unit at Christ the Rock Church that is available every Thursday, data care physicians in Nina, Sunnyview Expo Center, Reed Gulf Course, UW Oshkosh Culver Family Welcome Center. And there's places where people can receive their vaccines, uh healthcare providers, local pharmacists, other community clinics such as Fox City's Exhibition Center and Manasha Clinics, which are ongoing. And uh right now, we are still working with some over 65 eligible people in 1A. And we are starting Phase 1B, which is basically the um we start, we're starting with teachers the week of March 1st. So right now, this is what's eligible, our frontline healthcare personnel, long-term care facilities and residents, our EMS, police, fire and corrections, adults 65 and over. So this is happening happening concurrently with the Phase 1B, which starts with our education and childcare. And this uh this state is making a conscious effort to prioritize at um vaccinating educators and childcare. Then uh people who are enrolled in Medicaid, long-term care programs, some of our utility and communication infrastructure folks, public transit is next, and then non-frontline healthcare personnel. Um, the next group that will be um under consideration are those that are 16 to 64 with underlying medical conditions and other essential workers. And some very good news, over the weekend, the United States Food and Drug Administration authorized a COVID-19 vaccine to be distributed for expanding the supply nationwide um to Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so the state has um is anticipating getting about 47,000 doses in Wisconsin. Um, it is good for people who are 18 years and older. It's uh about si- 67% effective in preventing moderate or severe illness. And uh the governor has called this a game changer, and I would agree, uh a single dose uh will help protect people from COVID-19. And this, along with Moderna and Pfizer vaccines, are going to make it a lot more readily available. Uh, they also talked to us about um today at some of our um and get over here and get back to the screen, um about realizing that the vaccine is still a shortage. There's a shortage and we uh have to be patient and the allocations will be coming uh a little bit more um available to us, but still uh the supply of the vaccine does not meet the demand for it.
Okay, it looks like Alderman Langdon has a question for you.
Sure.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mary. So um Director Nancy, um, my wife and I were having the discussion about this. Um, and it was uh last, early last week, and I was really interested in that on World News Tonight uh that we watch every night together from 5:30 to 6:00. So my question to you is about homelessness people. And they uh 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 the World News had, of course, San Francisco on. So how is the the government and our government here and you, Nancy? Um, because the homelessness, of course, don't have TVs. Are are you getting, are you able to get out? Or how are you getting out to educate those people, let them know where they are as in Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 for the shots? Thank you.
That's, that's, that's a very good question. Obviously, that's a huge issue. Um, I know in Appleton and other adjacent communities, there are homeless shelters. Um, we work with the, for example, Pillars is one. Um, we also work with the uh Partnership Community Health Center and also with Hope Clinic, who sees, you know, homeless as well. Um, as far as going out, uh that's a very, that's a very good question, a good strategy that we should be undertaking. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be very helpful for people who are homeless. It's a one-dose shot, so it'll be a little bit easier, especially if they're not in this community very long, if we can get them vaccinated and they don't have to return for a second dose. Those are all very good things. But yes, we're working with a lot of our community agencies to make sure that there's outreach um to people who are homeless.
Alderman Taylor, is there any questions?
Sure.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director McKenney, yeah. Your onsite clinic uh was a great success. And uh I had uh 17 people, uh seniors that I had signed up uh for your clinic. And nine of them called me after they went through your clinic and they just, they they just couldn't say enough about it. Uh, how professional and how accommodating and how easy everything was coming in on the level. Uh, some people have issues with steps and things and how it was all uh that's uh on the floor. They didn't have to use an elevator or anything. So uh hats off to you and your staff uh uh with with your clinic. And uh uh I had a call right before the council meeting tonight from uh the party that owns the cab company ACAP here, he's a Manasha business. Yeah. And he was wondering about his drivers, will they be under, and you don't have to answer that tonight. I'll call you tomorrow, but so you could do a little homework for me uh to find out if they're under the essential workers, uh cab drivers.
So, yeah, that's a a very good question as well. Uh, public transit is what's in the 1B. So I can help clarify that with you.
Okay.
Uh, and then they would be shortly eligible if they were in that 1B category, so we can make that call um with the state. A lot of these questions about who's eligible um are coming up and they're fine-tuning things as we get questions like that. So I do appreciate that. And then I do, I do want to shout out to um people in the city who have been extremely helpful running the Wisconsin Army National Guard Clinic with us and and uh last week, uh police uh had a police auxiliary there helping with security. The fire department helped with our post-observation. City Hall helped with registration. It was a collaborative effort. It's um something that we exert, we call it exercise, but we practice, we train for. And uh the health department staff, as you pointed out, were extremely professional. They had a job to do. They knew what to do and they got it done. Um, it was quite uh quite amazing. Uh, the National Guard also contributed vaccinators as well as um people who entered the data into our electronic system when people had their vaccination. Um, it was very gratifying for our staff, but our only regret is that we didn't get as much vaccine as we wanted to. So um, you know, that's, that's the problem with this supply and demand issue is that we had the capacity, but we couldn't do more uh because of the limitations on the amount of vaccine. Hopefully, that's going to ease up, especially now that we have a single-dose um vaccination, um the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So things are looking up. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Okay, and Nancy, would you pass on to the Winnebago County that uh their clinic at the Sunnyview Expo Center uh was uh just as good as yours? I mean, I'm not comparing. But again, it's all on one level and the efficiency uh was was very well done. And I know you monitored that uh before your clinic opened and you probably got some ideas from that, but that that also was very good.
Yep, I did pass that on. And, you know, um, our our borders are impervious and our our uh people, you know, go over there for vaccine as well. So that's great. Again, they're hampered as well uh by the vaccine uh supply. And so I would ask for people's patience. We we want so badly to vaccate, vaccinate our community, but it's that limitation we have right now. Um, so we're using this time. We've uh, we've done some interviewing and have hired vaccinators to help us. So uh as you know, our nurses do work in the schools as well as at the health department, so having that added capacity is needed and we're ramping up.
And I also want to take this opportunity. I only live a block from downtown and uh when I go through the downtown, my wife and I, uh, there's nights where it's uh 5, 6, 7 o'clock and Nancy's at her desk working, the only light on in City Hall and um and on the weekend, she's there. And I just want everybody to know the extra effort that Nancy is done with this pandemic and how she has taken it to uh kind of, I think, a personal level and wanted to make sure that everything is is everything possible she can do, she's doing. And also, uh a businessman across the street, Bill Becker, had said, "That's the hardest working person in the city of Manasha." So congratulations, Nancy. Thank you for your dedication.
And thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications through your motion.
Mayor.
Alderman Sevenix.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we re- we receive Minutes A through F and Communications G through I.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. And uh Rebecca Nichols wanted to speak.
Did you have some motion a second? Discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that we missed public comments.
Public comments after the Minutes and Communications.
Oh, it's been a long night already. I was ready for public comment. Sorry.
I usually think it's supposed to be, but you're right, so.
I'm still not used to that.
Yeah, me neither. Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, letter C, Holiday Lights at Hot Committee. Um, one, two, three, four, five meetings already. And I just wanted to commend uh the minutes, uh reading every, every meeting, the minutes uh and what you uh uh the group has been doing and has done. You guys are doing a fantastic job. I just want to give you that shout out, uh that, um, wow, I I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, I just want to echo Mark Langdon's uh uh comments on 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 the Minutes and uh Sandra Dable-Taylor is our secretary. And that's been a conversation on this Council of all Minutes. And, you know, when you read something like this, you can clearly get an understanding of what's going on at the committee and and what the committee's doing with um with complete minutes like this. Uh, thank you, Sandra.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item G is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to comment at this point? We do have a time limit of five minutes for each person who would like to comment. Tim Jacobson.
Yes, Mayor. We're here. Me and uh me and my old buddy Bill Basler are here.
Tim, can we do that for the clerk, please?
955 Plank Road.
Thanks.
Uh, between the two of us, we have almost 80 years of city employment and experience. And uh I'm here to support our 621 resolution for Swirsky Way. I don't know if any of you have any of the background from that, but that was uh put up by the crew in Ask City Hall. It was uh something that came in as we started using that access with the salt shed going up in 2004. And uh they named it Swirsky Way out of love and respect for what we used to call the old man, Si Swirsky. Um, and that's coming from union people that wanted to do that, to a manager, for a manager. And the other thing, comment that I have is uh I remember when the hotel and the bank were getting raised and there was discussion at one meeting about losing our heritage here in Manasha. And uh that is, that's our DPW heritage right there. And uh our heritage isn't being lost, it's being ignored. And I would like to promote an eight-to-zero vote to make it official or leave us alone. The DPW did that out of respect and love for Si Swirsky. A genuinely nice man. If you ever met his wife, feel blessed because God put that angel on earth. She was just a terrific lady. And uh they were kind of the grandparents of us guys. And a really beloved man. He cared about the community and everybody else. And that was our way of giving him some recognition that he may not have gotten while he was on the job. And with that, I'll turn it over to my buddy Bill.
Thank you, Bill Basler. 455 Baldwin Street. I uh, I had a lot of comments, but Tim took most of them away from me. But uh
That's right.
He said, what he said is so true. Um, what Si did for the community, sometimes when we couldn't help community or some members of the community by using tax dollars, he would go to their homes. And I've seen it firsthand. He'd go to their home and help them off the clock. I saw it for myself. And what Tim said about management- And what Tim said about management and union, when Si retired, coincidentally, two of our union guys retired in the same timeframe, and we included him in our retirement festivities. There were many comments from, that, from people and family members that said he couldn't believe that the union wouldn't include a superintendent or manager in with our festivities, and it was, it was worth every bit of it. When I walked into the city garage for the first time and punched in at nineteen years old, as you can see, I'm not that old anymore, he took me under his wing and taught me a pile. Sometimes I thought he was making it miserable for me, but what I learned from him is beyond words. He, he had no degree, no college education, but in my opinion, he was, he was a genius in his own way, though he could handle people and cared. And one other occasion where he had a heart surgery, he, he came down to the garage, he probably shouldn't have, when we had bad weather, whatever it may be, the dedication is beyond belief. And in my opinion, if I had to say so about it or control over it, I'd put the man's name on the new public works facility, not just a street sign in the, from your own going to the salt shed. Thank you.
That's the kind of guy he was. I mean, there were many times, and he had some heart problems toward the end of his career, and he kind of went to Bill and I a few times, and he says, "Just kind of keep an eye on things." And he'd stand out in the, out in the lot or go to the back of the city garage, and I believe he was going through some heart attacks. But he'd stand out there and just try to breathe and staring up at the sky, doing nothing, you know, and we knew what was going on, but he didn't leave his post. And the man was having a heart attack. And that's the kind of leader he was and what we learned from him and the dedication that we learned, and I think that we kept that dedication going through our careers. And I don't know if you'll see that anymore, but that man is the one that instilled it in a lot of his employees. Thank you.
Thanks to you both. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra Dable-Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. I'll try to keep my comments brief because we're two hours into the meeting already. First of all, I would like to comment that I appreciated members of the PJC group for attending tonight's meeting and giving an update on their, the property. I've asked for that for the last couple of meetings. Next, I would appreciate if the mayor would invite the owners of the steam plant, Cranberry Company, to come forward and give an update on what they have been doing, if anything, at that site. Next, in no particular order, in the check register, there are several checks regarding delinquent utilities, over twenty-one thousand to Flax Crossing, over seven thousand to the Harrison, and over eighty-two thousand Manassas Utilities. If someone could please give an explanation on what those are, I would appreciate it. Tomorrow, the Plan Commission and the RDA will be meeting again. And again, there is no opportunity for the public to meet virtually or by telephone. This happened at the last, two weeks ago, and I attended in person, yet members, including the chair of the Plan Commission, attended virtually. I would like that same opportunity to be extended to the public. There is no reason why the public has to come in person when members do not. I've asked that several times. Under Communications, just very briefly, I still disagree with the attorney's opinion on its public hearing process. I won't go into detail due to time constraints, but I think she's misinterpreting state statutes. What she is referring to is the legality of publishing on a Sunday. That is the paragraph she's taking this out of. Under the memorandum from the Manassas Utilities, the Safe Drinking Water Fund Program, funds are being designated to support the efforts of the utilities and the Manassas City, one-third each for lead replacements, but the homeowner is still going to be charged their one-third. So both of the utilities and the city are going to benefit from this funding, but it does not benefit the homeowner. They are still going to be required to pay full price, so I'm rather discouraged about that. Regarding the TIF eleven amendment, in addition to the fact that that TIF is in debt of roughly fifty-eight thousand dollars at this time, what I'm most frustrated with is not the amendment itself, not the project, but the fact of the matter that, again, the utilities raised ratepayers' fee for the PSC to cover the expense of borrowing under the river and to relocate utilities. They didn't get the job done. So now they are asking to have the city taxpayers, through an amendment to TIF eleven, to pay for relocating utilities. To me, we're getting like double hit, so I'm very disappointed in that. And just lastly, I guess I'll just say that, again, for I don't know how many times, I am requesting a request for proposals for legal services to represent the city to be sent out prior to April when the current city attorney will be looking at a reappointment of her three-year term. Thank you.
I just do want to make note that the chair of the Plan Commission is the mayor, and the mayor was there in person for the last meeting. I do not see anyone else.
And he was there on his own.
The chair, the chair of the Plan Commission, Mrs. Taylor, is the mayor. The chair of the Perk Commission is Mr. Sturm.
I will ask you personally to allow the public.
So, moving on to the consent agenda, do we have any items that wish to be separated this evening? Alderman Sevenick?
Mayor, I think we need to go through all of them, one by one. So at this time, Mayor, I'll move to approve the minutes of the common council of two fifteen twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second from Alderman Tomgady to approve the common council meeting minutes of February fifteenth. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is a change order, is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the change order for the Benton Construction Company, its contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero two. That's for the Jefferson Park parking lot, basketball court, and the regrading and alternate bids. That's an addition of six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, sixty-seven cents. Change order number two.
Mayor, I'll second that. I'll second that, Mayor.
There is a motion and a second to approve the change order to Benton Construction for the Jefferson Park parking lot with an add of six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Is there any discussion? Alderman Langdon? No? Alderman Turner? No? Anyone else?
I would just like to say that since this project is being completed, and that's what we were told, that once the project's complete, that the fundraising efforts would start. I didn't agree with that, but we're past that, and I hope the fundraising efforts do start for this project. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three is a payment, is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make the, like to make the motion for the payment to Benton Construction Company, contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero two. That's for the Jefferson Park parking lot, basketball court, and regrading and alternate, and alternate bids in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, ninety-seven cents. Payment number six and final.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There is a motion and a second to approve the payment of Benton Construction Company for the Jefferson Park parking lot in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item number four is a change order, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll make the motion for the change order for Migrant Construction Company, Inc., contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero six. That's for the public works facility construction project. That's an addition of twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-three cents. Change order number sixteen.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There is a motion and a second to approve the change order to Migrant Construction Company for the public works facility in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item five is a payment, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to approve the payment for Migrant Construction Company, Inc., contract unit number twenty 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 dash zero six. That's for the public works facility construction project. That is an addition of four hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, eighty-five cents. Payment number eleven.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second to approve the payment to Migrant Construction Company for the public works facility in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, James?
Yes. Mayor, thank you. Just speaking of the public works facility here, as a lot of you may not know, the street was named Baldwin Street for a Department of Public Works director or superintendent back through the, I know he was there in the sixties and seventies, and then Si took over after him, Mr. Swirsky. And I'd just like to take a moment to say, Mr. Jacobson's here and without his leadership and without the opportunity to move forward on this building for a lot, a lot of years, and it got overlooked with other projects, I would just like to thank him for this opportunity and such a beautiful structure that we have because of him and also Bill Bosler in the room with him, an outstanding employee with the city of Manassas, both of them with the spirit of Manassas and the can-do attitude and that they brought to work every day and put, put Manassas first. Thank you.
Thanks, James, for that little bit of history. Mr. Baldwin's actually my second cousin as well, so some neat little ties there throughout the community. Any other discussion?
I gotta just tell you a quick, I gotta tell you another quick story about Mr. Baldwin. He loved a, I lived on First Street on the eight-hundred block, he lived on Second Street on the eight-hundred block, and we had a severe storm, one of those big severe storms that we get every ten, twenty years, and Mr. Baldwin had his, had, had a city truck in the garage at, at his home and had his personal car in the driveway and a huge tree totaled his car, so that's a dedication Mr. Baldwin had. He had his own vehicle outside and a city truck inside. And I forget Mr. Baldwin's first name, maybe Tim would know.
So seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella, or Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
A motion for item six, Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. This is pertaining to placing signs at the Ninth Street location. I'm going to ask that we postpone this to the next meeting because after talking with the public works director and the chief, the chief worked on putting together some updates from DOT as far as our ordinance. Our ordinance on heavy truck traffic is outdated, and so before we do this, I thought, let's do it right, let's get the ordinance correct so it addresses all the streets in Manassas, and let's pass the ordinance first and then bring the sign issue at the next meeting. So I, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this till the next meeting.
Do we need a second, Mayor? I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second to postpone this item till March fifteenth? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item seven is a service contract, do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman.
I'll move to approve the proposed service contract with Ellers and Associates to the, for the consider, the consideration of analyzing the feasibility developing the plan and administering the approvals of a project plan and boundary agreement to tax increment District eleven as recommended by the administration committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tedgady. Any discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a, a person in the public question, the amendment of, about the possible relocation of utilities. Sam, if you're available, can you address Ms. Taylor's issues on that? If they were correct or, or if there's something more here going on?
So I think what the, Mr. Bill Taylor had mentioned was, at the administration meeting at the last previous council meeting, there was a notation from Alderman Nichols that funds should, should go in towards looking at moving those utilities underground or possibly getting rid of the cell tower. That is, again, not in the project plan at this time, it's just, again, a project for consideration. It's our understanding, again, that with Manassas Utilities Contract, that they were planning on putting that underground, and, and I do- um, and, and I do not have the details as far as why that did not happen, um, at this stage, but it is something that we will be looking into and having discussion with.
And this is something that I believe, uh, Ms. Taylor was strongly in favor of always in the past, uh, I am myself, and, uh, uh, I would be in favor of this, uh, amendment.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item J is action items, the first item is the accounts payable and payroll, is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February twelfth through February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of two million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second.
So motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Savernick?
I do have one, if, uh, Jennifer is available. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't have an opportunity to call you, but I only have one, so it's, um, ALAD Tech, and it's check seven zero seven four six, and the amount is for three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, and it says, "Subscription", can you explain that to me, um? I don't have enough detail to know what that's all about.
Sure, let me pull that, um, check once, seven zero seven four six.
Yes, seven zero seven four six. Looks like the chief's ready to answer.
That is the, uh, subscription software that we use for the scheduling program at the Police Department, uh, something that's budgeted on the IT budget.
Okay, thank you, didn't know what it was for.
No problem.
I figured it was some, some type of IT, uh, payment, but all it had was subscriptions, so.
You bet.
Thanks, Tim.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a, Alderman Nichols, sorry.
Sorry about that, um, on the combined, combined page twelve, I'm seeing two checks, one to the Fox Crossing Utilities and one to Harrison Utilities for delinquent utilities that will then be placed on, uh, tax bills. Director Sassman, can you address those, please?
I sure can, so for, um, Fox Crossing and Harrison, we place any, um, delinquent water and sewer charges on our tax bills, and for Manassha Utilities, um, water, sewer, electric and stormwater. So about this time of year, um, we pay back those, those entities, those charges that we collect for them. Um, for Manassha Utilities, we pay them back for the electric and water, and of course, we retain the sewer and stormwater charges.
Help me understand what utilities would be paid to Harrison?
Uh, sewer, water and sewer.
Okay, residents of City of Manassha.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
That utility question would also be what Sandra was asking, so, aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the Clerk's memo dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Did you have discussion, Randy?
No, no, thank you.
Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is the renewal of professional services agreement, do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of Manassha and ALV Inspections LLC, renewing the service contract for twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Did you want to comment, Sam?
Yeah, I do, um, I have no idea what happened here, but, uh, Alderman Nichols, uh, notified me today that there are a couple corrections within this document, um, uh, certainly caught me, I guess, moving too quickly, uh, but copy and paste and working on redlining the document, um, and I did leave YBR properties in there, obviously that would be crossed out, um, and then the land purchase and development agreement language in item two would reflect the ALV inspection, so, um, again, just corrections, clarification there, um, that is completely my fault, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but, uh, take full responsibility.
So anyone have questions for Director Schrader, just commented? So we're going to approve it as corrected? With those two items removed then? Seeing no objections, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is the ad hoc holiday light committee recommendation, do we have a motion? Alderman Gotti?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that, um, the city authorizes the ad hoc holiday lighting committee to purchase thirty-five, thirty-seven snowflake decorations for the downtown light posts.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion and a second? Is there a discussion, Alderman Savernick?
Yeah, I, is there, do you want to include a dollar amount, or?
If you want to, that's fine.
That was probably gonna be one of my questions, too, for the budget money that we did give this ad hoc, what, what, what is this coming in on?
It was, so, on page two of the memo, it shows the actual invoice, twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety, I can't quite see it, ninety-nine, it looks like thirty-six cents?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, one thou- twelve thousand, one ninety-nine, thirty-six.
With a savings of six thousand dollars for the discount.
Six thousand, eight dollars and sixty-four cents, technically.
Alderman Savernick?
Just so the clerk has that, that should be part of the motion.
Sure, so, unless you object, we'll, we'll include the dollar amount in the amount of twelve thousand plus dollars. Any other discussion?
No, no, thank you.
No? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon? Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
You forgot Ann Schmidt, but I'll say aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Can't forget her, she just added her, aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is a donation of public art, do we have a motion? Alderman Gotti?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the City of the Manassha to accept the sculpture donation and added landscape for the site location, the living room.
I'll second.
Is there, there a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is ordinances and resolutions, the first is ordn- is resolution four, do we have a motion? Jennifer, would you like to, oh, Alderman Savernick?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve our four twenty-one, uh, the continuing appropriation for the twenty twenty fund balance, uh, res-
Reservations.
Is that how we want to term that?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second. Second.
So there's a motion and a second by Ted Gotti, is there discussion? James, did you have discussion? No? Would you want to comment, Jennifer, since you're, since you're there and been waiting, you might as well.
Um, this is a resolution that we bring forward on an annual basis if we have, um, funds that we wish to reserve, um, into the following year. Um, typically, it's either projects that aren't finished, items that aren't purchased, um, a, a number of reasons. Um, the first couple pages, I just give a brief, um, description of the item or project, and then on the, I think it's the fourth page, it's just a, in, in just more of a summary form, the account number and the dollar amount, um, your, your main focus is probably going to be the general fund, um, which is the total of the three hundred and eighty thousand, five sixteen, the, the other funds aren't, um, completely necessary because those funds stay within the fund balance, but it is still a good idea to, um, reserve that portion of the fund balance if we know, um, that there is a project, um, for the next year. Let me just see if you guys have any, any questions on this one?
Are there any other questions for Jennifer? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is resolution five, do we have a motion? Alderman Savernick?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move for our five twenty-one, this resolution is for transferring and appropriating funds.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second? Did you want, Jennifer, do you explain this one as well? Might as well, since you're here.
Sure, um, this is also, uh, a resolution that we bring forward on an annual basis, this one, um, strictly focuses on the expenditures, um, so the first section of accounts is, is accounts that are, show as over budget, however, a number of them have been noted that they do have supporting grant revenues, but they show as over budget or sometimes also at budget time with some of the Health Department, um, accounts, we might not know if a grant is available at that time, so the first section is those accounts, the next section of accounts are ones that are under budget, just to show that we have, um, we can offset those. Um, I do try to keep those within the categories, if some, uh, if public works is over budget in some area, I, I try to get, you know, public works on the other side, so this just, like I said, focuses on the expenditures and that we have accounts that are under budget, um, that can compensate for the ones that are over budget.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, so, the ones that are starred, have asterisks by them, they are grant-supported, uh, accounts that went over budget and then, uh, need funds to cover that over budget?
Right, like I said, this resolution strictly focuses on the expenditures, but I just think it's important to note that a number of the accounts in the top section that show as over budget, not only are there accounts that are under budget to offset that, but these specific accounts have, um, revenues, um, to support that as well, so it's just an additional note.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what was happening there, because I don't think we've seen asterisks before, like that.
I think last year I had just put them in, just as an extra note, that shows that they have a, a direct, um, revenue offset as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savernick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item M is couns- common council appointments, I do have to apologize, I did not place this on the organizational committee meeting back in April of this, of last year, and one of the duties of the Protocol Committee is to review the, uh, rules of the common council and mayor before the next council is seated, so we do have to have a Protocol Committee meeting, uh, what we would do at this is we would take nominations from the floor at this point, and if we have more than one nomination, then we would vote on those nominations, so, uh, do you have a nomination, Alderman Savernick?
Yes, I do, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to, uh, nominate Alderman Rebecca Nichols, uh, to the Protocol Committee.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Alderman Gotti?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I would like to add Ann Schmidt to the name. Thank you.
I don't know if we technically need seconds, do we need seconds?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations, Alderman Gotti?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Alderman Tom Gotti.
Okay, are there any other nominations? You want to nominate yourself again?
No, I want to, thank you for the, the offer, but I will decline.
Are there any other nominations?
Mayor, seeing that there are no further nominations, I move that nominations be closed and we cast a ballot.
I don't think I said it three times, so I'm gonna say it once more.
I think you said it five.
But they kept interrupting me, so, seeing that there are no other nominations, Clerk Kirk Kramer, could you take the vote? And what we would ask is that you would state the person that you would choose to be on the committee when the clerk calls your name.
Alderman Repella?
Rebecca Nichols.
Alderman Nichols?
Alderman Nichols.
Alderman Taylor?
Alderman Nichols.
Alderman Savernick?
Both very good choices, but I nominated, uh, Alderman Rebecca Nichols.
Alderman Langdon?
Alderman Becky.
Alderman Schmidt?
Alderman Schmidt.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Alderman Schmidt.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Alderman Nichols.
Two votes for Alderman Schmidt and, um, six votes for Alderman Nichols. Alderman Nichols has the majority vote.
Congratulations, Alderman Nichols, I think, I'm not sure, but, um, we'll send some information out soon about what you- We'll send some information out soon about what needs to be done. Item O is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing.
Hi, Sandra Dable Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. First, I'd like to congratulate Rebecca Nichols for her nomination. I think she'll do a very good job on that committee. I also want to thank those that asked the questions that I asked regarding the check register and TIF eleven. My, just to reiterate, my concern with TIF eleven is I'm totally in favor of underground utilities. I've been a proponent of it for a very long time. The issue comes with that, with the reconstruction of the Racine Street Bridge, it was my understanding that the Manassas Utilities was responsible for relocating those lines in and around the bridge and the bond of property. It was only half done. The tower on the south side still remains, and in fact, they installed larger poles on Annap Street. In response to this, the utilities went to the PSC and had the rates increase for ratepayers to pay for this project. They ran out of money because the borrowing underneath the river costed more than what they thought it was going to be. So now, to accomplish the underground utilities, that expense is going to be borne by TIF eleven and now get the burden of the City of Manassas taxpayers. So in fact, we're paying for something that we already paid for. That's my issue. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
Opposed.
Get five minutes before the Board of Public Works.
Are you okay with that, Mark? Okay.
Be back at eight forty-three.
All right, timekeeper.
Keep the clock.